All right. Good evening. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestream for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 843-2418-6730, and the required password is 150811. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Denise?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. Hughes could not be here tonight. Mr. Kizmarsky?
Here.
Ms. Jansen?
Here.
Mr. Copeland?
Here.
Ms. Deveniero?
Here.
Dr. Morthe?
Here.
Mr. DaSilva should be on his way. And our Mawa student representative?
Here.
Thank you.
At a good notice, the Agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on September 18th, 2024, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Copeland, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Copeland. Agenda questions.
all.
Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. It's a matter of fairness. Okay, we do need a short executive session in the beginning here, so I need a motion You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. to recess to executive session. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. We should be back hopefully in about 15 minutes. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Thank you. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Ms. Ting Jansen, and second by Mr. Gallo. We are officially open to the public. Hello?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Just a little short of what I wanted to say on the note so I don't miss any points. Hi, good evening. My name is Omar. My name is Nervous. Let's start with you. Do you have Board of Members and as a superintendent?
Is there a resolution? Are you gonna?
No, it's just a public comment.
Oh, so that we wait till the end for public comment? If there's a specific resolution on the agenda, then you can bring that up now, but if not, then just wait till the end. So you have a little more time to prepare. Thank you. All right, seeing no one else coming forward at this moment, let's have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Denise, and second by Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, we're gonna go to Dr. Dettora, Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to formally introduce and welcome our student rep, Ms. Alice Alphon. I'm extremely excited about this because we were together at JK, and I just wanna, it's so nice to see them in elementary school, and now you're representing the SGA and Mawa High School. So thank you so much for dedicating your time and coming, and I know that Alexis Gisparian is the other rep that you guys are gonna be sharing responsibilities with. So thank you so much for doing that. We always enjoy student rep reports. The second thing that I want to talk about is, we've been talking about this, I try to talk about it every single week, just to continue to get the word out. So we created an image that we're gonna be sending out to the community, just to save the date. We'll do formal RSVPs and things as the dates gets closer, but this shows the different dates that we are gonna be meeting with the Gulf and community at large. We're also gonna be making sure that we get out into the newspapers to share this information. I'm gonna try to connect with the town along lines of getting on to the TV station as well, because the more the merrier. We had a great turnout with our first strategic plan, and we're going to be engaging New Jersey School Boards rep, Mr. Matt Lee, to facilitate those conversations. So please mark your calendars, please spread the word, talk to your neighbors. And again, this is not just specific to our school community, this is gonna be extended out to our community at large. We made sure that we put a reference to this in our newsletter that we sent out in the summer, and then we're also gonna be utilizing this in our fall, winter newsletter as well. So please save the date and get the word out. My last item that I want to share with the group, I don't know how many people follow the Mawa Patch, but one of our incredible students, Lucas Hart, was showcased on the Mawa Patch. Now, I have a personal connection to this story because I was able to get a chance to see Lucas at different stages of this specific project. Lucas Hart is in our engineering and technology pathway. He is working in advanced woodshop and furniture design class on this specific project. He is building a boat that is 11 feet long and 450 pounds. Making the boat malleable has been a challenge, to say the least, and really getting a chance to make sure that that wood's bent the right way and it's built to the spec in which it needs to be built to float has been a challenge. He's worked and really persevered through this project and really has done different aspects of this project four or five times to get it to where he wants to be, along lines of steam bending the wood and all the different complexities that go along with it. Lucas hopes to study naval or regular architecture to learn the design shifts, possibly at Notre Dame. He has a legacy there as his mother and grandfather attended Notre Dame as well. So this is a massive point of pride. We always talk about reading and writing and math, and we don't get a chance to talk about the trades as much as we can along lines of the offerings that we have, and this is also a product of the Pathways Program and the diverse offerings that we provide to our students at the Pathways Program. That being said, this is more of a celebration of Lucas's hard work and commitment to this. It is his hope that he is able to finish this by the end of this year as a senior and take the boat, not on the road, but on the water. He was so excited that he was able to take the boat from the woodshop and bring it, that's his house, and the pool, and it's his house, to see how poignant the boat is. So congratulations to Lucas and to Mr. Capazone because there's been a tremendous amount of work on this project, so it's a great celebration for our students. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Dettora. I love that he wants to go on the boat with his dog.
It's Izzy.
Izzy!
It's Izzy.
Oh, very cute. Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Look, and you see Izzy, right?
Yeah, Izzy's right there. Anyways, they're very special. All right, and now we're gonna go back to our Mawa student representative, Alice Alphon, if you have a report this evening. Make sure you just get.
Hi. Zor.
Hold the button down.
Hold the button down.
And everyone's turn. We'll see here.
Yeah. No. Oh.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I had one. Like Dr. Dettora introduced me, my name's Alice Alphon, and I'm president of the SGA Mawa High School. So to start, at the school, fall sports have begun, and they're doing well. In particular, boys soccer has been undefeated this season, they're four now. And we also have fall auditions for the play, this year it's Get Smart, and that will happen sometime in November. We also have our first marching band competition this week, this Saturday, at Jefferson High School, to look forward to. And then last week, we had back to school night, which was a success, and some of the students were able to help out at that. We also have Mawa Day coming up next Saturday. There, we're gonna have three booths, one for the SGA Executive Board, and then the senior and junior classes will also have their own booths to help fundraise for their class. There'll also be other clubs like DECA and Robotics and a few others. And then lastly, we are starting to plan for Spirit Week. We have our themes, it's board games, so seniors are gonna be Monopoly, juniors Candyland, sophomores Chess, and then freshmen Our Life.
It's the best. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alphon. Appreciate your report.
And I don't know if you know this or not, but Mr. Kizmarsky has publicly said in the past that Mawa Day is his favorite day of the year.
It's the greatest day of the year.
The greatest day.
There's no question about that.
Yes.
It's not real. It's not.
And recognizing you may have other things to do, you may leave a little early if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. All right, Mr. Lamb, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just quickly, I want to say, I've already been here almost two months, and I really just want to thank the administration, our board, all of our central office staff, even staff at the school for being so welcoming. From my point of view, it's been a smooth transition. Also have to give a shout out to Nicole Sweeney, Assistant to the Business Administrator, and the Business Office staff for making it a smooth transition for me. So we're busy doing work and accomplishing great things, but I can't say enough about the transition, and I think I'll save the rest of the financial stuff for the finance chair. Well, there's just the auditor was, financial auditor was here at the end of July, right after I started, and they're coming back in October to finish the audit. And then our engineer from Land Associates is working on updating and audit of our facilities so that we can make informed decisions about capital projects after we have that report. So that will be probably middle of October, we'll have that report.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lamb. And it feels like time's flown for two months, so glad that you're feeling comfortable, and it's been a nice addition to our group. Thank you.
Welcoming.
Welcoming administrator, too. Dr. Fair, let me turn up Dr. Fair for a report this evening.
I sure do. I just want to add on to what Dr. Dettora shared about Lucas. You have an article in front of you that features Lucas's building of the boat, and Mr. Pascal, the building principal of Mawa High School, he actually forwarded that article to Lucas, to which he responded, quote, "Thank you, Mr. Pascal. I could not have done it without your support and the support of the Mawa Woodshop. There's much more to come with this project." So we look forward to seeing what's next for Lucas and his boat, and Izzy riding the boat, so that's exciting. The next piece is, "The district recently learned that Mawa has won an award in the media coverage category for this past spring's Habitat for Humanity Club work, inclusive of the collective efforts of the high school's quest to raise significant money to assist in building a home for a family in need." That award is coming from the NJSPRA, the New Jersey School Public Relations Association, which is rooted in the belief that school communication is a crucial leadership function and is essential to the success of New Jersey educational institutions, and we've certainly learned that over the years happily. Members from our Habitat for Humanity Club, as well as the building principal, will be in attendance at the NJSPRA Award Ceremony on October 10th, where the exact award will be announced to the district. So they've shared that we've won the award, we don't know what award that is exactly. I know.
Any money that they've won?
No, I think it's just in honors.
Need a bolt.
Not a grant?
Yes.
Carter.
The next piece is, "We've been talking over the years about our dual enrollment program. It's something that we're super proud of in the district, and our goal has been to ensure that this program ever earns." So it's provided current high school students with the opportunity to earn college credits while attending Mawa High School. So Mawa High School currently offers 31 courses that qualify for Mawa High School and college credit from seven colleges and universities. In our last school year, 132 students earned college credits in 194 classes. Of our most recent graduates, 40 of them earned six or more credits while attending our high school. So last year, we had 23 courses, and this year, we've added eight new courses with our partnership with Ramapo College, and those courses are all listed here, everything from.
...with our first strategic plan. And we're going to be engaging New Jersey School Board's rep, Mr. Matt Lee, to facilitate those conversations. So please mark your calendars, please spread the word, talk to your neighbors. And again, this has, this is not just specific to our school community. This is going to be extended out to our community at large. We made sure that we put a reference to this in our newsletter that we sent out in the summer. And then we're also going to be utilizing this in our fall, you know, winter newsletter as well. So please save the date and get the word out. My last item that I want to share with the group, I don't know how many people follow the Mawa Patch, but one of our incredible students, Lucas Hart, was showcased on the Mawa Patch. Now, I, I have a personal connection to this, to this story, because I was able to get a chance to see Lucas at different stages of, of this specific project. Lucas Hart is in our engineering and technology pathway. He is working in advanced woodshop and furniture design class on this specific project. He is building a boat that is 11 feet long and 450 pounds. Making the boat malleable has been a challenge, to say the least. And really getting a chance to make sure that that wood's bent the right way and it's, and it's built to the spec in which it needs to be built to float has been a challenge. He's worked and really persevered through this project and really has, has done different aspects of this project four or five times to get it to where he wants to be, along lines of steam bending the wood and all the different complexities that go along with it. Lucas is, hopes to study naval or regular architecture to, to learn the design shifts, possibly at Notre Dame. He has a legacy there, as his mother and grandfather attended Notre Dame as well. So this is a massive point of pride. We always talk about reading and writing and math, and we don't get a chance to, to talk about the trades as much as we can, along lines of the offerings that we have. And this is also a product of the Pathways Program and the diverse offerings that we provide to our students at the Pathways Program. That being said, this is more of a celebration of Lucas's hard work and commitment to this. It is his hope that he is able to finish this by the end of this year as a senior and take the boat, not on the road, but on the water. He was so excited that he was able to take the boat from the woodshop and bring it, that's his house, and the pool, and it's his house, to see how poignant the boat is. So congratulations to, to Lucas and to Mr. Patasone, because there's been a tremendous amount of work on this project. So it's a great celebration for our students. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Dettore. I love that he wants to go on the boat with his dog.
It's Izzy.
Izzy. Oh, very cute. Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
You see Izzy, right?
Yeah, Izzy's right there. Anyways, they're very, very special. All right, and now we're going to go back to our Mawa student representative, Alice Alphon, if you have a report this evening. Make sure you just get...
Hi, Zor.
Hold the button down.
Hold the button down.
And everyone's turn. We'll see here.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I had one, like Dr. Dettore introduced me. My name's Alice Alphon, and I'm president of SGA Mawa High School. So to start, at the school, fall sports have begun, and they're doing well. In particular, boys soccer has been undefeated this season, they're four now. And we also have fall auditions for the play this year, it's Get Smart, and that will happen sometime in November. We also have our first marching band competition this week, this Saturday, at Jefferson High School, to look forward to. And then last week, we had back to school night, which was a success, and some of the students were able to help out at that. We also have Mawa Day coming up next Saturday. There, we're going to have three booths, one for the SGA Executive Board, and then the senior and junior classes will also have their own booths to help fundraise for their class. There'll also be other clubs like DECA and Robotics and a few others. And then lastly, we are starting to plan for Spirit Week. We have our themes, it's board games. So seniors are going to be Monopoly, juniors Candyland, sophomores Chess, and then freshmen Our Life.
He speaks all his life.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alphon, appreciate your report.
And Al, I don't know if you know this or not, but Mr. Kizmarski has publicly said in the past that Mawa Day is his favorite day of the year.
It'd be greatest day of the year.
The greatest day.
No question.
Yes.
And recognizing you may have other things to do, you may leave a little early if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Lamb, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just quickly, I want to say, I've already been here almost two months, and I really just want to thank the administration, our board, all of our central office staff, even staff at the school for being so welcoming. From my point of view, it's been a smooth transition. Also have to give a shout out to Nicole Sweeney, Assistant to the Business Administrator, and the business office staff for making it a smooth transition for me. So we're busy doing work and accomplishing great things, but I, I can't say enough about the transition. And I think I'll save the rest of the financial stuff for the finance chair. Well, there's, I, just the, the auditor was, financial auditor was here at the end of July, right after I started, and they're coming back in October to finish the audit. And then our engineer from Land Associates is working on updating an audit of our facilities so that we can make informed decisions about capital projects after we have that report. So that will be probably middle of October, we'll have that report.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lamb. And it does, it feels like time's flown for two months. So glad that you're feeling comfortable and it's been a nice addition to our group. Thank you. Welcoming administrator. Dr. Fair, let me turn up Dr. Fair for a report this evening.
I sure do. I just want to add on to what Dr. Dettore shared about Lucas. You have an article in front of you that features Lucas's building of the boat, and Mr. Pascal, the building principal of Mawa High School, he actually forwarded that article to Lucas, to which he responded, quote, "Thank you, Mr. Pascal, I could not have done it without your support and the support of the Mawa Woodshop. There's much more to come with this project." So we look forward to seeing what's next for Lucas and his boat, and Izzy riding the boat, so that's exciting. The next piece is, the district recently learned that Mawa has won an award in the media coverage category for this past spring's Habitat for Humanity Club work, inclusive of the collective efforts of the high school's quest to raise significant money to assist in building a home for a family in need. That award is coming from the NJSPRA, the New Jersey School Public Relations Association, which is rooted in the belief that school communication is a crucial leadership function and is essential to the success of New Jersey educational institutions. And we've certainly learned that over the years, happily. Members from our Habitat for Humanity Club, as well as the building principal, will be in attendance at the NJSPRA Award Ceremony on October 10th, where the exact award will be announced to the district. So they've shared that we've won the award, we don't know what award that is exactly. I know.
Any money that they win?
No, I think it's just in honors.
Is that a grant?
The next piece is, we've been talking over the years about the, our dual enrollment program. It's something that we're, we're super proud of in the district. And our goal has been to ensure that this program ever earns. So it's provided current high school students with the opportunity to earn college credits while attending Mawa High School. So Mawa High School currently offers 31 courses that qualify from Mawa High School and college credit from seven colleges and universities. In our last school year, 132 students earned college credits in 194 classes. Of our most recent graduates, 40 of them earned six or more credits while attending our high school. So last year, we had 23 courses, and this year, we've added eight new courses with our partnership with Ramapo College, and those courses are all listed here. Everything from practical psychology to business and personal law, to graphic design and animation. So it gives a wide variety of students, regardless of their pathway and opportunity, to earn college credits, which is awesome. And last, we've already sent a notice to our, our school community via email that on Friday, September 27th, like we've done the last two years, we ask anyone who's interested to join us for our instructional and paraprofessional job fair, which will be taking place here at Central Office. And just a shout out to Mr. Michael McCabe, he is our, one of our assistant principals at Mawa High School. He actually created this job fair flyer for us, and that's been disseminated. So we've already heard from people who are interested, so if you know of anyone, spread the word. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Fair. All right, my report this evening. So a few brief things, hope the start of school is going well, and we're a few weeks in now. And welcome to our student representatives who come back in the fall. We don't have their report over the summer, but thank you to Alice Alphon and Alexis Kisparian, who are going to be joining us during the year. It's very important that we have student participation, and so they're able to come and tell us about events going on at Mawa High School and share with us things that are happening related to the student community. So it's a nice piece for us, and I think as a board, we generally really enjoy the updates that we get and we learn ourselves about what's happening. All right, I'm also bringing up that we had a member of the class of 2024 who was designated as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Sri Samita Bhami Dipati, even hard for me to say, but is a recipient of this great honor. She's been named as a member of the top 16,000 students from the original pool of 1.3 million juniors who took the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test in 2023. So congratulations to Sri Samita on this wonderful accomplishment. Very proud of her.
Engineering and Technology.
Oh, is it, oh, I'm sorry, is that, was that listed here? Oh, okay, engineering and technology pathway, excellent. And sports are in full swing, as we had a report, and so good luck to all our teams who are participating here in the fall. And it's exciting to see all the, all the kids back and sports back on our fields. All right, board committee reports this evening. Mr. Gallo?
I just have a quick, uh, welcome, Tom, again. The financial facilities committee is kicking off its last few meetings of the year. We had one just before this meeting about business that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks. And we've also laid out an agenda for our next two or three meetings. So we have an exciting and dynamic agenda for us. You said you're going to be at a committee meeting in Vancouver.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Do we have their committee reports? Mr. Denise from Policy.
Yes, Policy has three policies on, makes agenda for worst reading. Policy 2200 Curriculum Content had a major, had a minor language change by replacing New Jersey Court of Curriculum Content Standards with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Policies 3322 and 4322, use of personal cellular telephones or other communication devices can be taken together and pertains to teacher and staff members appropriate use of non-school-related personal matters using a personal cellular telephone or other personal communication device during your work day. Lastly, the policy committee met on September 10th to go over the process for round two of reviewing and updating the policy and regulations inventory, beginning with series 1000 and 7000.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Denise. Do we have other committee reports this evening? Any board member remarks this evening? Mr. Gallo?
Just briefly on the passing of Peter Windrickowitz. Peter Windrickowitz served on this board for 30-plus years. When I joined the board in 2016, Peter and I did not necessarily get off to a good, to a good start, but after connecting and just talking face to face, I understand, I understood what he was looking for. I respected his experience and contributions to the board, so it was very helpful to me. And in the end, that conversation helped me to be a better board member, and I really thank Peter for his contributions. And obviously, our community and his family miss him, and we hope that his family is very proud.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right, let's move on to, or business. We have the minutes from August 28th, 2024. I need a motion on the floor of Ms. Ting Jansen, second by Mr. Denise. So let's take 17A, Mr. Lamb.
17A, the approving the A28 minutes. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
I'm staying.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. D'Addeniero?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva?
Let's stay.
All right, now let us take new business, 18A through T. All right. Motion on the floor, 18A through T, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Copeland. And Mr. Lamb, roll call, please.
Mr. Denise? Yes. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. D'Addeniero?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva?
All right, we're going to now take 19B through, let me see where this ends, are we T again? We are S. 19B through S. We will take 19A and vote on that after executive session at the end of our meeting. So right now, we're taking 19B through S. I need a motion on the floor, Mr. Kizmarski again, second by Mr. Copeland. Mr. Lamb, roll call, please.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and thanks to all the parent volunteers. I didn't thank them on that one.
Multiple, multiple people can thank you.
Well, I can do a school, you can do a school.
Sorry, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Kizmarski?
I also would like to thank you.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to all the parent volunteers.
Ms. D'Addeniero?
Yes.
In all sincerity.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes, and thank you to all the parent volunteers.
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
All right, now we will take public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. DeSilva, second by Ms. Ting Jansen. All right, we are officially open now to the public. Anyone would like to come forward and make a statement?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you could just say your name and address, thank you.
Hi, my name is Omar Mohammed, I live on 9 Surrey Lane. I've been a member of resident, I've been a resident of Mawa for over five years now. I'm also a board member of Mawa Muslims, which is a civic organization that represents over 100 families in town. I wanted to express my deepest gratitude for your decision a few months ago to approve the inclusion of Eid holidays to our school calendar. The, this lawful action not only acknowledges the significance of our, of Eid for the Muslim community, but also represents your ongoing commitment to celebrating the rich diversity within our schools. By listening to our voices and recognizing the cultural and religious practices that are meaningful to so many, you are fostering an environment of respect, inclusion, and unity. It's actions like these that help build stronger, more understanding community where all students and families see, are seen and valued. Thank you for continuing, thank you for continuing to champion diversity and for taking concrete steps to ensure that all students feel a sense of belonging in Mawa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed, we appreciate your comments greatly. All right, seeing no one else coming forward at this time, a motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Kizmarski. All right, we will recess to executive session. At this time, motion to recess, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo, and then we will adjourn from there. And, and action will be taken on 19A.
Yeah, we have, we have to come back.
Good to come back. Okay, so we will come back to take action on 19A. Okay, but, you there. Have a good evening.
All right, welcome back. All right, I need a motion to re-communicate the public action meeting. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. We will now take a vote. I need another motion to now vote on 19A. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Denise Rohl-Collis. Mr. Lamb.
19A, Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. De Viero?
Yep.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
All right, and a motion to adjourn.